Marion Avenue off of Lafayette Boulevard is in bad need of being paved. The first person to bring it to my attention was Robert Sobel, and Father Green called me last night, and that those two streets close to People's Cleaners, they're in bad, bad shape of, of being repaved. They actually have no sidewalks and gutters. And that's an area over there, it's not my ward, but it really needs to, a shot in their arm. And it's been my opinion that if we move that fire station from Marion Avenue, which is, badly needs to go, to a piece of property between Lenz and Argonne Avenue, I don't know whether that's large enough for a fire station or not, but that would give that whole corridor, you know, the lift that it needs. That's, that's all that I have.
I had some lady called the mayor's office today and said, um, that her, she had voted for me in the past, but she was not going to vote again. Her street did not need to be repaved. It would be wasting money.
That's one of Tommy's...
Was that, did you get the same?
No, I got the one that they're putting curbs and sidewalks in front of her house and she doesn't want it.
You're wasting the taxpayers' money.
I know people...
Only thing I have is I wanted to remind managers to schedule our city assessor to come in to address the cracial issues on surplus buildings and whatnot. I'd like to understand how those crazes arise. That's all I have.
Dr. Webber?
No.
Okay.
I've got one street. Um, it's, what is, you come down there and say, where does that drive turns into Bush Street? And from, there was some construction there, right at that Exxon gas station, that block between whatever that street is and Virginia Beach Boulevard, I mean, you could tear up an off-road vehicle on that street. It's horrible. I come through there going to ODU and it's just absolutely, it, the street was blocked off for a while because of some work, I guess it was utilities or whatever, but it, it's absolutely horrible. Somebody's car is going to get...
Mr. Piper's ripped that thing up about three times.
Yeah. It, it, it's put back together like a horrible puzzle.
You get a chance. I have to hold it there.
Sure.
Just to let everybody know, I'll be attending the VML conference this weekend, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and I'll be presenting with Dr. Simmons from the school board, uh, school system. We're doing a presentation about urban schools and I'm excited to be part of that and helping. Anybody can join me if they want.
Where is it?
It's in Arlington. And two issues, I'm asking for R5 and R7 to be continued until the end of the month. R5 is Mr. Hopkins' property and that issue. The reason for that is, I just found out last night that the Bayview Civically, actually they were to letter support that they did not discuss it as a civically. It was their Board of Directors who meet over the summer and he spoke to them and we wanted to give an opportunity for everybody in the community to have a input on that, not just the board. And also the Cottage Line Civically has asked to weigh in because it's right on the border of that and they would like to look at what he's proposing with that. I know you've been hit with a lot of emails from him, so I'm hoping that we won't get a lot more over the, the next month, but it, opportunity for the community to discuss it more. And then R7 is the Little Creek Road, 901, 905. I spoke with Mr. Everett, the applicant for that, and we wanted to give an opportunity as well for another civically across the street from that to weigh in. There's been some miscommunication on, among the Little Creek Road civicallys. There's some confusion between that and another property, and so we need to get that clarified. There's another proposal for an auto dealer to renovate a building for, for a, what is it called? Detailing inside for the cars that they sell. And a lot of civicallys thought it was Mr. Everett's property, not that one, so they were voting against it. So there was some confusion on that. They weren't looking at the actual details. And Mr. Everett did want everybody to know, he's, he collected 350 signatures from the community tonight. He was going to present, but we just want to wait, and he agreed to wait a month to go speak before the South Bay Civically. So I think that would have to be the, they meet the second Thursday of November, so it would have to be the last meeting of the month that that would get moved to, if everybody's okay with that.
Marcus, I went over to Norfolk State this morning to welcome you to president and to, on behalf of the council and city, and express our support for the president and whatever we could do to help he be successful. And while we were there, I was reminded about when Paul talked about the streets in Angela, case in error, but he's, he's done it all. He's been the, you know, many, I mean, secretary, he's been the treasurer, he's been involved in the Comptroller's Office, he's been head of Virginia State, you know, he tried to save St. Paul's that one year. His resume is, is outstanding. I mean, he got his MBA from Pitt, he got his, I think, he's a CPA, got his undergraduate degree from Penn State. I mean, you name it, he's been involved in it, got all these distinguished awards. But anyway, so we were talking and we were talking about how hard it rained and that some of the streets over by Norfolk State had, had gotten a lot of war rumble. And, and John, I don't know if it's time to, to look at some of the strain, the stormwater drainage issues, to make sure they're clear again. Okay? I mean, I would really like the president to think we're trying to be responsive. If you could get somebody out there right away to, you know, look around the schools, some of the drains there.
We've done some studies and we'll get...
Yeah, I know, I know. He's got a whole bunch of that, you know. I know that. I told him. Problem that it typically has, but if we can just clear out some storm drains and look like we're trying to pay attention to what's saying, we might help you. And you might look at some, we'll have the streets looking around there too, John. So, okay, that's, that's what I have. Oh, there is, we have, we need one more, or we can just go with the two, but Tommy recommended John Hadfield, who's clearly qualified as a SIPSA nominee. So now we have two. If anybody has a third, we can vote. Did Mr. Hadfield say he would agree to it if he got appointed? John?
Yes.
He'd be good? Either Don or John. So if there are any other names, you're shot that, that we come up with. And we also have one, we're going to have one appointment, Anna Richardson-Smith for the Southern Service Commission. Okay?
When are we going to have an authority?
We can do that at the very end of the week. I mean, at the very next nighttime meeting. Okay? Yes, we need to do that. Okay. Mr. Manager, Government Shut Down.
Mayor, Members of Council, what we're going to do each time that we have a, a meeting is to provide you an update on the information we know that's related to the Government Shut Down. We want to do that at the beginning of the meeting. We actually have Tony here from Visit Norfolk typically. That's, we start with our guests, but this is a pretty quick presentation, and even when we do not meet and the council does not meet, we'll still provide you with some type of update in your Friday package. Ron's going to express to you what we know at this time, what we don't know, and some of the things that we are doing presently.
So Mayor, Members of Council, a very high level overview. This is very much a moving target, but we have the staff task force that I'll, that I'll explain in a minute, monitoring the issue. What we know is that in general, right now, local government should not see any major impacts unless it continues realistically beyond the end of October. When you look at specific services, such as those that we share either federal funding with or state partners, human services, community service board, Norfolk Public Schools, right now, there's no foreseen impact this week. Each week what we see, last week was different than this week, and we know that the upcoming weeks could, could change. NRHA and Hampton Roads Transit have not, do not have any projected changes at this time. There is one specific item that is considered discretionary under the federal funding that Hampton Roads Transit has, and so at this point, the Naval Station Transit Extension Study has been canceled until further notice. We will, as we, as the opportunities for the federal government to, to react, we'll be able to look at the different programs with some specificity over the next couple of weeks. What you have in, in your drop boxes and appendix that shows some more specificity than what I'm talking about here. Those who receive social security payments currently will continue, but we know that any new claims are going unprocessed. Grants that we currently have, such as a Community Development Block Grant, they will continue. What we know is that we have about 25,000 federal employees in the Hampton Roads area with a compensation of about $10 million a day in lost compensation that is lost out of the economy. Now, the Commonwealth, it hasn't been necessarily an executive order by the governor, but the Commonwealth did establish after the last General Assembly session, the Virginia Federal Action Contingency Trust, or the FACT Fund, which is to counter actions taken by federal government that adversely impact citizens in the economy of Virginia. This was really set up with the idea about sequestration, of how they might provide assistance to localities for what could happen for sequestration. But we have been in communication with the governor's office and staff that run that fund for what the opportunities for the use of that fund. What we don't know is the time and extent of the shutdown, if temporary measures will be taken. They could pass, pass what they're calling for, for a clean resolution. That's merely a temporary funding of the government, which is essentially what they've been running on for a number of years without a passed budget. We don't know if the federal employees will receive back pay as in previous years, nor the magnitude of any of those taxes that we particularly derive from discretionary spending, like sales tax or admissions taxes. This, the length of it, you know, will be really up to the policymakers. In the eighties, when we saw Tip O'Neill, Speaker of the House, and President Reagan battling, there were seven or eight shutdowns over, you know, the course of those two terms. We know that we had the shutdown in, in 1996. So if they do a continuing resolution, that will give some indication for what's their appetite for actually providing a level of funding that people can plan on. So what are we doing about it? As I mentioned, we did establish a task force, so city staff, to make sure that we're, have an intergovernmental communication with agencies at state, federal level and our delegation. Also, the other local cities, to see if anything is being done by other cities. No other cities are, have any plans in place for assisting furloughed employees from the federal government at this time. We are developing spending reduction plans for city departments, if and we need to take that action at some point in the future. We're making sure that we moderate our filling of vacant positions until we see what the end of this month holds. We're establishing coordination for a potential hiring center for transitioning military and personnel, and personnel and veterans. This was already in queue as a, a long-term action, but we see the necessity to go ahead and jumpstart that. And that could be something that could be considered as a package under the Virginia FACT Fund, and we're exploring those opportunities about what assistance they could provide us to stand up that transition center. What we don't know is if any of those funds could be used for direct aid for any individual, but we're exploring those opportunities. What is the Commonwealth prepared to do? What are any nonprofits, for example, prepared to do to assist Norfolk residents with the situation? So each week, when we don't have an opportunity to verbally engage you on a discussion about this, we will give you the report, as City Manager said, on Friday, that'll be sent out by Winter or Lori for what we know for, as we, each week as it evolves.
Is the Coordination Center for Hiring, Loa, is any of that done by the VA? And are we duplicating what they already do?
It would not necessarily be duplicative, no. What we, what we're looking for in that type of effort is a better one-to-one connection with the individual and a job opportunity, or the retraining opportunity, as opposed to some of those larger centers may not have that personal touch that we're looking to provide. They may, you know, give you the host of areas that you could search for, but we're looking for what type of specific translation of the, of the, what you did in the military, how is that applicable to the private sector, what training might you need, or what you might need to do to communicate what capacity or capabilities you have.
Okay. We talked about the homelessness issue, and I know there's an issue with veterans regarding homelessness. When we do our homeless, and this may be outside of range with this family, when we do our homelessness, our homeless fare, are we going to have somebody there from the VA that will be able to deal with those people as well?
Yes.
I'm looking for John. Typically, yes, we do.
The homeless connect.
All this supporting game is our part of that, yes.
Yes.
Beds are...
Okay.
Guys, they've been great.
All right, so we'll keep you posted.
International, that Gloria.
Happy.
Oh, I do.
See if we have happy cameras or everything.
That's, Marcus, before...
I'll let you down.
Tony begins.
Give me a second.
Angela mentioned the homeless. Do you think the new director of, except for Granby, could attend our property meetings?
Security cameras.
Me and Mike, where's he?
Internet protocol.
Yeah, I'm not sure he's on the list.
Means it runs.
So, very good. So, Mayor, Members of Council, on the heels of the retreat, some of the topics that came up related to the city and how we market, how we message, and we thought that it would be great to have Tony here tonight to talk about Visit Norfolk and some of the strategies that they have in place, as well as a good deal of data.
Thank you, Marcus. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, City Council, Staff, I'm Tony Di Filippo, if you don't know, head of Visit Norfolk, and thank you for the opportunity to bring you up to speed on some exciting initiatives that Visit Norfolk is doing, along with our sister agency, the Norfolk Tourism Research Foundation. We are the city's out-of-market... We are the city's out-of-market agency responsible for attracting visitors, meetings, and conventions. Our stakeholders come in a lot of different shapes and sizes. We fulfill this mission by putting bodies in beds, driving attendance to attractions and arts offerings, and by filling seats in restaurants. Our mission is making sure that Norfolk is seen as our dynamic destination of choice. We're very proud of the reputation that Visit Norfolk has earned over the last 13 years. Paul and some of you, Mr. Mayor and some of you around, that's not always been the case, but we've worked arduously to, to develop an entrepreneurial atmosphere, a customer-focused organization that delivers shareholder values. Awards are great and we're very proud of these awards. Despite the couple on top there, the Religious Conference Manager Praize Award, the Successful Meetings and Pinnacle Award, we've won that last one for the last 10 years. And those are our customers. Those are meeting planners that say annually, when they're asked, who's among the best CVBs in the country to work with, they say Visit Norfolk. So we're very proud of those. We think, in fact, those are priceless. Travel industry is a big business in the Commonwealth. I think we all understand that. 21 billion a year, according to VTC, $58 billion, million dollars a day. That translates into Norfolk spending of $727 million in 2012, almost $2 million a day. This is an interesting stat based on average, star data from 2012. On average, 365 days a year, 5,000 people stay in Norfolk. That's every, every day of the year, 365 days, that's 5,000 people that need breakfast, lunch, and dinner. 5,000 people that are probably going to be out shopping someplace. 5,000, 1,000 people that might be taking one of our sightseeing trips, going to our attractions, taking in all the fabulous arts performances. Another interesting metrics that, that our board found very useful is annualized tax revenue on occupied hotel rooms generates as much tax as a 204 residential property. As we know from the tourism, there's no schools and infrastructure. And if you look at the calculations here, we took from our Smith Travel data from occupancies from last year, an average rate, calculated the occupancy tax, surcharge, and sales tax. And you see an occupied hotel room generated about $2,113, very close to what a $203,000 residential property generates. And the hospitality industry generates about 7,000 jobs. I'm proud to serve on the mayor's condition, commission to reduce poverty, and in some of our subcommittee meetings, we've talked about the travel industry and how the transit, travel industry creates these jobs. Some of them are entry-level, there's no doubt. An entry-level is a job, and the travel industry is very upperly mobile. And since back, the U.S. Travel Association recently released a stat, a study, excuse me, that says the skills learned in the travel industry are transferable to almost every other industry. In fact, I was visiting with a commercial realtor in, in the city a couple of weeks ago, trying to get some money for our foundation, and he said, when I see hospitality on a resume, I tell my people to hire them, because they have skills that's really transplant. Obviously, we're ecstatic about the new iconic attractions coming online. I know these images aren't current, and we're all awaited with bated breath to see Bruce's new renderings. But we visited with, our staff's visited with the Courtney's folks, we've visited with PHR staff, we've visited with Bruce's consultant, Papan, Papan Group, and everyone thinks that Visit Norfolk is excellently positioned to help maximize the synergies. These iconic products will bring to our market. Back in 2003, 2004, our board said, you know, we need some quantifiable, data-driven analysis on what the potential markets are for Norfolk. And so at that point, we, we established a 501(c)(3) corporation, the Norfolk Tourism Research Foundation. This is a 501(c)(3) aimed at raising private dollars to fund research about the travel industry in the city and in the region. And we've invested those dollars, I think, pretty wisely. I'll show you how in a second here. In 2006, we did our first visitor profile study. That was with Old Dominion University, University of Florida Tourism Research Center and our foundation. And we verified, we were able to quantify where our folks came from, what they liked, what they didn't like, and most importantly, and at least very importantly, how much they spent. That was a very important study from us. Since then, you know, we had a little blip in 2007, probably everybody remembers that little recession that came up. So our fundraising efforts were put back a little bit, but we got back on track. We were able to purchase a drive market study in 2011. We are still a predominantly drive market, so we wanted to give our stakeholders an update on some of the trends on when people drive, do have a destination on a vacation, you know, what they like and don't like. Last year, we did a seminal study on inner-city visitation with our partners at the beach, on inner-city visitation between the two cities. If someone came to the beach on vacation, do they come to Norfolk and vice versa? And we found out that amazingly, at least our researcher, Continental Research right here in Norfolk, thought it was a pretty good numbers. Forty percent of the people that came to either of those cities visited the other city for at least a day. And of those 40%, if you traveled to another city, you spent more money, you stayed longer, and you had a higher intent to return. And we asked them, even though they're predominantly high drove down there, if we had light rail, would you use it? And a majority of them said yes. So we thought that was good information all the way around. Also, in 2012, we purchased a culinary travel study. Norfolk's getting a reputation as being a great foodie town. You'll see some of our advertisement marketing pieces. So we purchased this culinary study to get the latest trends on the culinary business. And as we speak, we're working with ODU and the Virginia Tourism Corporation on updating that study done in 2006. We have over 100 ODU students working on this project. There's a PhD candidate who is supervising it. There's five ODU professors, Vice President of Research from Virginia Tourism Corporation is assisting as well. By the end of the year, we'll have an updated study on the travel study. And that study will be at 25% of the cost of the study we did in 2006. So this ensures our marketing investments are highly targeted, well, well researched. Everyone has scared us resources, so we want to make sure we have a focused, targeted marketing effort. And as Jim says, where's Jim? Sorry. Fish where the fish are. You know, I made a major Popeye, I'm going to be fired in the morning. I forgot to introduce our guest, Mark. Jim Wolford, the gentleman manager of the mall, is a longtime board member, Chairman of Visit Norfolk. Claudia Keenan is our advocacy, leads our advocacy effort. Jack Angerson heads our foundation, Norfolk Tourism Research Foundation, Chair for the past three years. Donna Allen, Vice President of Sales and Marketing Extraordinaire for Visit Norfolk. Been the market at several hats. He's a Residence Inn General Manager on Cranleton, the Vice President of Norfolk Hotel Association, and the Vice Chair of Visit Norfolk. So that's, that's our support team, sorry. And Esther Turner with DIA, our account executive, and my tracker this evening. Sorry about that. So we want to fish where the fish are, and we think we have a very focused, focused marketing effort because of this research. When people say convention and visitors, beer, oftentimes they think meetings and conventions. And I would submit that the biggest return we give to the city is a citywide convention. If we bring 1,000 people downtown, fill up all the hotels downtown, you're going to have a couple hundred people every night on Granby, you're going to have that beeline to the mall back and forth. You're going to have market compression pushing occupancies out to the Military Highway, Newtown Road area. And so probably singularly, that's the biggest bang for the buck. But the onesie-twosies, the individual leisure traveler, the group, the tour and travel market are important for those negative, negative occupancy periods. They're important for our arts and attractions. They're important for our limited service select properties and Military Highway and so forth. So even though this is more, more expensive, Visit Norfolk has taken on that market as well. If you happen to be in Times Square between June 15th and just a couple weeks ago, September 30th, you saw this. And this is a piece that we obtained through Lou Hammond, our ad agency in, in New York City, 15-second spots around 18 times a day through that six-week period. There's one point, there's 15, what's the number for Times Square?
1.5 million.
1.5 million people go through Times Square every day. So that's some nice marketing about Norfolk. In total, 463 million sets of eyeballs saw ads about Norfolk that Visit Norfolk generated last year. Our research verified that DC market is a great feeder market for us, not only in the association arena, one of our largest court group segments, but in the leisure segment, and we've aggressively attacked this market. We have a full-time professional sales presence in the city now, a full-time sales manager. Thanks, in large part to some of the surcharge money that you allocate to us, we're able to have a full-time position there that's constantly rubbing elbows with those meeting planners. We have these metro buses for the past two summers, we've wrapped in this, in DC. We wrapped six weeks two years ago and 12 weeks this past year. You can see reinforcing the key elements of our branding effort, dynamic, diverse, and distinct, and a lot of the arts and attractions. I can't tell you how many photos I've got emailed to me from Norfolk and saying, we're just in DC and this bus went by. And so, and that, and that's double duty effort, because you have the meeting planners and the individual leisure travelers. Every dollar we spend in Norfolk is really working double duty for us. And we ran spots like this to help support our, our sales efforts.
There's no place like Norfolk.
I love this place.
Norfolk is vibrant. It is hip. There is something for everyone.
It has arts. It has culture.
You can't beat the seafood.
Podcasts are amazing.
Norfolk is distinct. Norfolk is diverse.
Norfolk is dynamic. Find all the fun details at visitnorfolktoday.com.
That's a Level 30 spot, 32nd spot with DC. Has anybody ever seen that before?
No, but where'd you play that, in DC area?
Where'd you go?
Where'd y'all run?
DC Table was run in Philly, it's run in North Carolina.
Terrific.
Now, and I'm glad you say you haven't seen that, because we're out of market. You shouldn't do, shouldn't. But there is a four-minute video, and that was excerpted, right? If you haven't seen that, we sent it to you. We're on our website.
Which is good, which means I wasn't in their market either.
Exactly. But then, you know, we can take that four-minute video and excerpt different spots, and depending on what market we're targeting, you know, target that piece. And that's followed up by our print piece, print pieces, we're a consumer, again, driving home that dynamic, diverse, and distinct. And you can see some of the different markets, various market segments we're attracting there. Obviously, we're, are big on social media and online marketing, again, dynamic, diverse, and distinct, and driving people to our website, wanting to get people to our website. We also support the attractions with other print pieces and collateral, our Visitor's Guide, the Norfolk Guide. Every year, we have one or two attractions on there. We usually pick an attraction that has a major renovation or update. So this year, we have the MacArthur Memorial on there, and our rack cards. On the other side, you see the Glass Museum on there. And those are supported by salesmen. Anytime we go on a sales mission, whether we're selling to individual travelers, or to tour groups, or to meetings, we're talking about the amenities in our city. Even if a meeting has a very tight schedule, they want to know that there's a vibrant thing that their delegates can go to between, between activities. And obviously, if you're coming for a leisure trip or a group tour, they want to focus on, hey, what's the fun stuff to do in your region? We also support the festivals, basically by aligning with tourism and industry associations that are in the group tour market. A couple of years ago, we hosted CITUS, Student Youth Travel Association, which does about $18 million a year in student travel. And those two was because of some of the surcharge funds allocated to us, we were able to host that. Always with, when there's a major festival, travel writers or meeting planners in. You see last year's Jazz Festival, or this year's Jazz Festival, some of the major periodicals with major circulations picked up articles about Norfolk. And we have the Wine Festival coming in in a couple of weeks, and while the cadre, travel writers and meeting planners in for that. It's a very high percentage of meeting planners book while they're here, but we usually get a lot of residual PR from that. And then we did a little play on our culinary tours here, and we moved away from dynamic, diverse, and distinct, and went to dynamic, diverse, and delicious, playing on that culinary theme in Norfolk. And you can see some of these food, nationally syndicated food publications that picked up articles about Norfolk. So, but we use all that same messaging to segue back to the meetings and meetings. Meeting convention is still a very bigger, big part of what we do. Our, our group, our team has attended 65 trade shows last year, but because of the stellar industry we enjoy in the industry, we're able to get these trade shows to come and hold their meetings here. I mentioned student youth travel. A couple of years ago, the beach hosted ABA, but we had a reception for them at the half moon. minute. I think manager was there, Reverend Marcus. Two months ago, we had TAP, the Tourism Alliance Partnership, and we called the mayor's office and said, "Can you come and help us greet them at 7:00 AM Monday morning?" And Paul came out and helped greet him, greet us. Barclay came out a couple of weeks ago to help the group for us. And the vice mayor is always what they do, and we appreciate your assistance on that. The tourism partnership, they were here to plan itineraries for future tour group meetings. And while they were here, they booked four groups for the tattoo. And, you know, we have a well-tenured and professional sales team that have boards on these industry association seats. So we were able to keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening in the industry and at the same time get these major industries to have their meetings here at Norfolk. I mentioned our website earlier, about 23,000 folks that go to our website monthly. If you haven't, I invite you to go there, test drive it, give me a call if you see something you think should be included or not. If you go to the next slide, we have a, some of the key best practices from the industry built into the functionality of our site. You can book a room, plan an event, find packages. You can see that whole video that I was alluding to. And we probably have the most comprehensive events calendar in the city on the Visit Norfolk website. From our PR efforts headed by our DIA here locally and Lou Hammond in New York, I mentioned earlier, you can see some of the major publications where Norfolk has added presence over the past year. And then we take the whole breadth and width of our amenity package when we're pitching our PR. You can see the daily bill there has one on the Bayou Boogaloo, the Travel Girls, the one on nature piece on Botanical Garden, and Pathfinders did something on our rich history. So you can see there's various segments that we target through these publications and our PR efforts. And with an excellent award of the All-American City, we were able to take this out through Lou Hammond in New York and pitch it to a different audience and picked up 300 media outlets, picked up by more than 300 media outlets and reached more than 75 million people. So all in all, the gained earned media value of our PR efforts alone was $7.3 million last year.
What do you mean earned media value? What is that?
That's media, if we'd had to purchase those ads instead of what we got from the PR.
You got that down to 96 cents too, right?
That's what I figured.
Our marketing, our marketing efforts are focused out of our, in Virginia, tourists is identified someone travels more than 50 miles. But those efforts are felt locally.
Let's go back for a second.
Yes, sir.
What was that last comment? I'm sorry.
Our marketing efforts are focused...
Can you go back?
Here.
Yeah.
In Virginia, tourists is identified someone travels at least 50 miles.
Are we going to get to how we, I mean, I know you're out of market, but what happens to just the casual visitor, how they're treated? You don't have a slide on that one.
How they're treated service-wise?
Yeah, I mean, we have lots of visitors who show up who don't use Visit Norfolk.
Right.
You know, who come here, you know, who need to be welcomed, who need some way to find the, okay.
Yeah, okay. So those, we focus on a 50-mile radius, but when they, that's to bring the visitors here, we often use, we're the fishermen. We throw the net out there, we bring the fish in, and the visitors bring them to the shore. The, that's what Visit Norfolk does, and we're out there marketing Norfolk as a dynamic destination of choice. Those visitors come in, according to the ETC, spent about $2 million last year. They create jobs and tax revenues, as we talked about. Some of those are entry-level jobs, but those folks that work in the industry are consumers in their own rights. So all that revenue gives us more money to go back and repeat and refresh our messaging. We talked about opportunities, and I think this might answer your point, Paul. It's an exciting time to be in the travel industry in Norfolk with everything that's going on with the conference center and Waterside and the Slover Library and you name it. But I thought I'd focus on a couple of the less obvious ones. International travel market is developing exponentially. And those folks have seen some of the major gateway centers. They now want to see the second-tier all-American cities, and they want to come to all-American cities that have first-class hotels. So I think we're well-positioned to attack that market. Obviously, we'll be pre-marketing the hotel, convention center, and Waterside. But this is a piece here, Paul, that I think, Mr. Mayor, that I think answers your question. Visit Norfolk wants to take a lead role in the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program. This is a nationwide program that takes, and we reach out to all of our stakeholders and has folks trained so we can raise the service levels to the level that's going to be necessary to service these iconic products we have coming online. Again, it's a national program that we are willing to facilitate and bring anyone that touches tourism who would be certified through this program. So a couple of things I would like to leave you with is that an occupied hotel room generates a bit of taxes. There's about 5,000, there's about 5,000 guest rooms per night, on average, every night of the year. Those visitors get out and about and traverse the city and spend $2 million a day. And there's over 7,000 people and growing. When you just put the numbers for Waterside and the hotel alone, this number could be 8,000 plus in a very short time. So that is my presentation, and I will open any questions.
Tony, what do you need from us?
Well, the Certified Ambassador Program is going to cost money, whether that's done piecemeal through the entities or overall agency, but that is not an exorbitant amount of money. But more than that, I'd like to have your support on that program. I think that's speaking to your issues, not Paul.
Yeah, I mean, you began your comments with you're the out-of-market agency responsible for bringing people in. And we have a lot of people, and I know what your focus is, but there are people that show up here every day who've come to see a relative, or somebody's in the hospital, or somebody's, I mean, it just, that, I don't know what kind of job we do of actually, you know, letting them know about the things they can do while they're here. And I know you've got the booklet, and I know...
But more than that, we have a lot of, we do a lot online, but then we just launched this month our mobile visitor center. You know, we had a visitor center out there in Ocean View. We have a minivan now. We had it out at ODU Homecoming last weekend. It has two awnings to pull out of it, has a generator on it, has brochure racks, the license plate has asked me.
But that's where you tailgate to.
Pardon me. No, we weren't tailgating. Especially not at Steeler. But we had it, we have it all wrapped in the fishing piers on it, some of the other attractions. But no, we can take it, we can take it to Ocean View, there's something going on there. We can take it to, you know, we're doing the NSU Homecoming, so we can, so it's going to help us touch more visitors. But we do a lot out of online, but I think this ambassadorship program, again, it's been tried in several different cities. We really, I mean, everyone knows Bruce's project is going to be top-notch. Waterside is going to be iconic, so we really need to have the service levels to support that. Any other questions?
Seems to me like that needs at some point some more discussion.
Yeah.
You know, about, I mean, how inviting we are to people who may just, are just driving through on their way to Atlanta or something to stop here. And I mean, and how we can point them to the museum, or how we can point them to, you know, over to Waterside. I mean, just how we distribute that sort of information to people who are not just coming here for conventions or big meetings, but also the folks who are, you know, maybe come here and spend one night or two nights, they're seeing a relative, they heard about something. I mean, I just, at some point, I think, Sam, on how we do that. We used to have a visitor center, actually, Wofford kicked this out of the mall over there, but we used to have one over there. Remember, that was part of the original deal? We got, but, anyway, it's just, I think the manager just bears some more, yeah, by you.
Okay. Hang on. Thank you.
Okay, so, the Wine Festival is going to be big this year again.
They had closed the street.
Closing, closing Waterside Drive, we're going to be out on the street.
Wow, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Periodically, we've committed to come back to the council and discuss what we call smart processing. So David has a, another report for you. We had this on the agenda, I think, a month ago, and so this is a follow-up today.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of council. I'll give you an update on our smart processing project. Smart processing encompasses a lot of things, and I'm going to talk first about the Norfolk Cares Assistance Center and what we've been doing in that area to improve our handling of customer calls and customer customer service. So I'm going to give you a quick summary. First, I want to mention that this is actually Customer Service Week. There's a week to recognize customer service staff members, and we've been doing a lot of recognizing of our staff this week. I think they've come a long way in a short period of time, and they're delivering a much higher level of service. So it is Customer Service Week, and we'll have an open house on Thursday over at the Granby Municipal Building, if you want to come in and see the Norfolk Cares Assistance Center and meet the ladies who are behind the phone calls. And they're very busy, so I'm not sure they'll be able to spend much time if you come by, but I think we'll be able to see them. Some updates, and since I didn't get to give the presentation in last month, I've been able to update the data, so you get a new month's worth of data. But in September, we began taking calls one hour earlier, starting at 7:00 AM, and now through till 6:00 PM. So we are taking calls longer than our traditional just office hour day. We took almost 11,000 calls in the month of September, which is 139% increase from the same month a year ago. So this is reflecting the manager's strategy of moving calls that are dispersed all over the organization into a call center where we can track them, monitor them, and deliver a more consistent level of customer service. So we're doing about 550 calls per workday. The average hold time for a call was one minute and one second, and that's down from previous month, partly because our call volume's down a little bit from September to August. Our busiest months are during the summertime during the high grass-growing, weed-cutting season. But that is a pretty good level of maintaining a waitlist, and we try to do that with staffing and techniques. We get a lot of bulk waste pickups, and so we processed about 1,560 of those. They did 550 for email requests, emails that just come in. And then we also do a larger number of online requests, and online is becoming a bigger and bigger piece of how we get information from our citizens' office services. So Request Tracker, which is our website online request tool, we received about 2,200 requests online, about 110 per day during the month of September. Of those, we closed almost all of them during the month, about 106 per day. Some requests take much longer, they involve more work. You know, we were talking about paving, fixing potholes, curbs, those things, you generally take a work order that takes more than a few days. But on average, we're closing requests in seven calendar days or about five workdays, which is a pretty good average target for most citizen requests. Since we started that service in March, when we launched the new website, we've taken over 17,000 requests, closed over 15,000 of them, had about 700 come in on the iPhone mobile app. And this kind of reflects our strategy. 91% of these requests are processed through the Norfolk Cares Assistance Center, and 9% go directly to departments. So the bulk of the requests are coming in, and we're being able to kind of, the work is still delivered by the departments. The idea here is that these folks serve as your concierge to city services. They're the ones who take your request, get it to the right person, and get back to you when it's done, or get back to you and let you know that it's going to take longer than we told you originally. So that's kind of their role. And again, their request, about five workdays to finish those up. So it's, and I think, if you remember, we, about 11,000 telephone requests. So online is still, you know, at 2,000, not a giant chunk when you compare all the phone calls coming in, but it is becoming much larger. And one of the nice things about the online side is it's real easy to measure that with the tools we have, and we're trying to get more sophisticated tools on the call center side so we can give you similar data. Just to hit a point, I was looking while we were getting the Visit Norfolk presentation. Last month, we had 108,000 unique visitors to the city website. We had 275,000 visits overall. So just to give you a concept of how, how many people use the electronic resource, there's a lot of people out there, and that's 108 unique individuals were on the Norfolk website. And right now, there's about 60 people on. And it always goes up when you guys are meeting, by the way. You notice that more people come to the website than there's me. So I'm going to move on to our smart processing initiative with the Development Services Center. We've talked with you about a couple of times, and we had a number of recommended improvements to try to improve the development process and feedback and communication on what's going on. So we're doing a whole series of technology upgrades. We're creating what we've been calling a one-stop center on the fourth floor of City Hall so that people don't get to run around between City Hall and the Granby Municipal Building. The idea was to make it more convenient to do all of your business, whether it's a business license, planning and zoning things, permits, right-of-way permits. You could do all those in this building and not have to traverse back and forth, which was our number-one complaint when we talked to our customers. So that's proceeding. I'll give you an update on where we are with that. Again, trying to get things more online so that people don't have to call, they don't have to try to hunt down people to find out what's happening with their plans, so be able to get more information. And the biggest thing is to be consistent with our communication because, you know, we've talked about this issue of you get three different answers if you ask three different people. We're really trying to rein that in so that we all have the right information, we're all able to give the right answer when we're asked, what the status is, where you are in the process. Because a lot of times, that's all people really want to know, is where am I? You know, I submitted this, when can I expect it to be approved? And where will I go next? We are reviewing and updating ordinances and fees, and Frank's going to follow me in a minute and talk about a number of those things. And we're also looking at that across the region. We made some changes to the fees in last year's adopted budget, including adding a technology fee to help fund some of these upgrades. I haven't received much pushback on that fee. In fact, I've had a couple of people talk to me about, well, I'm happy to give you my $5 because I see that it's actually producing results. I can go to the website, I can go to Norfolk Air, I can actually find some stuff. So I think that's a good way to, for the users who are using the service to pay for the service. We have, we completed the development of a new Norfolk Air site. We're getting ready to make some more changes. Today, we have well over 300 data elements on every piece of property, including code violations, all the permits, status. We will be moving towards having review process and where plans are, plans are submitted, you'll be able to find them there by checking on the property. We continue to look at best practice, what other cities are doing. This is not a unique problem to Norfolk. Every city is always trying to optimize its development review process because we all realize we compete with every other city. And if you've got a smooth process, people want to work here. And so that's our goal, is to keep ahead of everybody else who's also trying to get in front on this issue. We heard from people that they wanted to be able to pay with a credit card, establish a point-of-sale system. This has actually turned out to be much harder than we thought. We thought we had it nailed down. We're going to have it ready and go in August so you can go into planning. We've had to do a few, we've had a few glitches with using a 20-year-old permitting system and trying to get modern payment processes to work with an old system. But we're making progress on that, and hopefully that's, that should be taken care of here in the next few days. We're, the one-stop center is actually under construction on the fourth floor. We've got the space available, it's been cleaned out, and renovations are proceeding. So we're planning to be done and occupied in there in February of 2014. We implemented a pilot, and now we're expanding our electronic building and site plan review, trying to get away from paper so that there's no paper right now. Plans move slowly from office to office. Comments move back via paper. The idea is to eliminate all the paper so that everything moves electronically and saves those steps of the paper actually transitioning from one office to the other, and even back to the, from the consultant to the consultant, back and forth. Again, publishing the site plan review activity on Norfolk Air so you can look at a piece of property, find out where everything is on it, and that would be both the property owner and anyone else who has an interest in what's happened on the site. You'll be able to actually go and see what plans are submitted. And finally, we're developing a set of citywide telephone answering standards because we realized that in, we can't handle every single call in the call center. we realized that we can't handle every single call in the call center. People will still call departments directly for many things. They'll call... We have multiple call centers. We have special call centers for special things. And we want to... It's not... We want to have a standard so that the customer gets the same experience, a good experience, not just... And the same experience, but the same good experience no matter where they call. And that's a challenge for some departments because of staffing levels. So we want to make sure that when we use technology... Because people hate, you know, when you call to talk to a person, you hate getting stuck on a machine and you can't get to anybody. We want to avoid those things, set up standards so that people aren't in what I call the voicemail loop or the menu loop, where you pick one, and then the next one tells you to pick one, and you hit zero, and then it goes back to another menu. So these standards, we have a draft, and we're in the process of getting the... To get that out to all the departments to react to. So that's where we stand with the telephone standards. And again, doing some training so that we get this consistent appearance. So with that, I'll transition to Frank, and he can talk about where we are with development review process.
Thanks, David. Before you start, Frank, any questions? David, that was a great presentation. I think the notion of adding standards for telephone, you know, for customer service for the telephone, telephone is terrific across the city.
I just want to say thank you, because it's made our lives easier. I expressed to the city manager at our retreat that constituents have noticed a difference in the way that the city communicates. And so everybody who's involved in this, with the Impact Center, your IT folks have done a great job, and I know, I appreciate it. Just the lack of phone calls from constituents is, in itself, improvements.
You're welcome. Our goal is for them not to have to call you to get what they deserve.
We know you can't make everybody happy. There's some people have made up their mind, you know, about what they think is the right thing, but...
Surprisingly, we can make most people happy.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we committed to you when we began the smart processing is we're going to improve our times for dealing with building permits. When we went out and met with developers, what we heard overwhelmingly was we did a good job in turning permits around quickly, but we could do better. And so David and I met yesterday, and I acknowledge that I still think that we're doing a good job. Our average... What we tell people, our response time on a residential permit is no more than three days. On a non-residential permit, it's 10 days. But we find, I get a report every month, looking at where we are and meeting these standards. We are meeting our standards these time periods 97% of the time. 93% of the time, we get it faster than that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you think that our standards are good. How does that compare to other cities? Are you getting there?
Well, I'll guess there. I'll tell you that I'll go there right now. I had a phone call last month from a city council member of a neighboring city. Anytime I get a phone call from an elected official of a neighboring city, my immediate reaction is, oh, my gosh, he's got a complaint, we did something wrong. He said to me, "Mr. Duke, this is going to be an unusual phone call, one you don't often get, but I want to compliment you on the service we got for your building type of staff." He said, "I thought what we did in our city was good, you were better. You were faster." And he was also complimentary of the professionalism and the courtesy shown by staff. So we are doing better than the other cities, and I think it is a reflection of the commitment that the city manager has made to a well-managed government, and then the assistance that we've had from David's staff in trying to better coordinate all of our processes. We have also done a number of ordinance revisions that have come before you, trying to reduce the amount of time or reduce some of the conflicts that we have had in a zoning ordinance that is more than 20 years old. This is one of the oldest zoning ordinances I've ever worked with. So we are trying to bring our 1980s zoning ordinance into the 21st century. We have created standardized use tables in all districts, eliminating inconsistencies that would create confusion. We've simplified our downtown regulations. You've approved these, and we eliminated the biggest single complaint we used to get, and that was the requirement of a zoning certificate for a fence. We rewrote that section of the ordinance to try to make it simpler for people to understand. My zoning enforcement staff told us this has gone from the single biggest complaint they've got, or they were receiving, to one of the least complained-about items that they were dealing with. We are continuing to simplify development certificate processes. The Fairmont Park Civic League last month asked us to completely rewrite their PCRO in order to make that a more efficient, easier system to work with. Riverview has done the exact same thing. We're working with 35th Street. So overwhelmingly, the community has bought into, we need to simplify these processes. You're going to see those coming to you over the coming months. And we are looking to eliminate some things that require special exceptions, adding time to the process. If we're serious about wanting mixed use, for example, we ought to allow it by right. Building code is going to catch the limitations on those, and that's where you'll have your biggest obstacle as opposed to creating another regulatory obstacle. And we've also are hoping very quickly to update our parking regulations to make those simpler for people to use and understand.
Frank, can I interrupt for a minute about fences?
Yes, sir.
You know that my experience with the six-foot fence on a corner lot, the poor owners who bought my house after me when I put it in illegally, not knowing that I did it illegally. Can we look as a city in updating that? Because we allow those types of fence in East Beach to be on corners, as long as they're 10-foot off. But everywhere else in the city, we require people to pull off one slat, or they can only put a, what is it, a three-foot fence on the corner...
A four-foot fence, or it has to be 50% open.
Right. So, and I understand there, you know, that one of the arguments that we used was the police issue and not being able to see in clearance. But you have people who live on bigger roads that need to have that privacy just in the blockage. I know they chose to move there and live there, but I just think that it seems a little bit archaic to me that we're not allowing those six-foot fences on corner lots, as long as they're on their property line or that they've honored the 10-foot, you know, setback on it. I just think that it seems... I mean, you look at Pleasant Avenue and all those houses like my former house, it just... They need that because of the, you know, issues that are in the community to be able to block that, so...
We're nowhere close to being finished with our ordinance revisions. I think I harass Mr. Jones and Mr. Williams on about a weekly basis with another ordinance revision that we're looking to bring through. Because we do need to simplify our... We do need to update our ordinance. And fences are still something we need to work on. We did something as a quick fix. We simplified the standards to make it easier for people to understand. That's just the beginning.
Okay. So you're going to look into possibly allowing that?
My staff thinks I'm crazy, but I'm willing to look at all sorts of things. We are, as I just indicated to you, we are beginning a complete overhaul of our land use regulations. We do recognize they were written in the 1980s, they were adopted in 1992. It's time for them to be updated, so we are beginning that process. One of the other issues that we have talked to David about as part of the smart processing initiative is that we need tables for tablets so that our inspectors in the field can enter data in the field, which would reduce the amount of time for getting, for example, a certificate of occupancy for a new house by 24 hours. Simple, we just need the technology. We've tried this with some of our people who originally were like, oh, my God, we can't do this. After working with it for a day, they didn't want to give the tablet back and go into the ill way when we were doing things. David mentioned the online submittals. We are... We have that availability right now. We are also posting everything that we are doing online within 72 hours of determining it's complete, so that people do have access to all of our information. And we continue to evaluate permitting fees to ensure that what we're doing is consistent with what's going on in the region. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to David so he can finish up, unless you have other questions for him.
Okay. We... Well, we've made a lot of progress. There's still a lot to do, and there are a lot of challenges. Keeping up, catching up and keeping up with the latest changes in technology. As I mentioned, we have a very old system that our codes and permitting stack uses. It's 15, 17 years old. It's quite a challenge to make it do modern things because it is such an old system. Our neighboring cities have spent millions on the permit system. Millions. We don't have millions to spend on a permit system. So we're looking at... Fortunately, the technology marketplace is coming around, and there are new solutions that are, in our world, cloud-based or up in the internet. There's software as service, so you don't have to put so much money out initially. So we're looking at some of those, and I think we've found some solutions that will be within our ability to pay for them and make a good sense out of a good investment.
Are we looking at some of the smaller companies that offer... I don't like startup, but some of the smaller companies that offer some of the same kinds of technology, technological software, services that don't require, you know, the major hardware and, you know, installation and, you know, 10-year contracts and all that stuff that are less expensive?
Yes. We've done quite a bit of that in other areas other than smart processing, and our strategy over the long run is to move to as many of those as we can because they are less expensive. So, and this permitting one, we've looked at some systems. So if, in the web, there's a company called Salesforce.com, and they've been known, they build applications to automate the sales process. But they have expanded way beyond that. They use the technology they develop for sales, and now they are a big presence in the government sector. And they're building new applications, and they have a handful of vendors who have built permitting systems on top of Salesforce.com. So we're looking at those kind of solutions, which leverage an investment that's already out there and being paid for. The downside of that is that then we have to use the system they have. We can't customize it, which in some ways is good because it makes us rethink our business processes and adapt to something that lots of other people are using. So we are looking at those kind of things. We always struggle with recruiting highly qualified technology staff. And right now, the economy has turned around, technology staff is again hard to get, although the shutdown continues much longer. It might play to our advantage because some people might get tired of putting up with every October not being either a consultant or civil service employee, and they might want to consider working for a little bit less in a more stable environment than we offer. So maybe that'll work to our advantage, and we'll have at least something good coming out of that. We have to train our staff, and the hard part of that, Frank and I had this long discussion yesterday. If I'm training them, they're not working, which means they're not inspecting, they're not reviewing. So we're right at this balance, that if I take them out to train them for a day, then you're probably going to get a few more phone calls, because we didn't quite get those plans turned around that week because they were in training. So we're trying to work through how to best do the training and minimize any impact on the people who are in the process. Again, maintaining that excellent customer service, you know, we're doing a good job, we want to do a better job, we want to do the best job we can. This funding for large system upgrades, I... I mean, while that's a challenge, I think we've got enough options that I'm not overly concerned that we're... That I'm going to be asking the city manager for a lot of money. We're asking you to fund a budget request for a lot of money. I think we can do this at a reasonable cost that we can afford.
Buffer the times. Buffer the times. If you've got to train people, if you've got a period of time where you have to train people, just buffer the turnaround times. Feed in some, you know, some extra hours or whatever. That way, when you give people a... When you give them timeframes and you know you're training, you're still giving them realistic timeframes, but you're giving them timeframes based on training built into those timeframes. So if you get it back to them early, you look like God. And if you get it back to them on time, you still look like God.
Yeah. And so that's a good point. We are looking, because we actually see a little bit of a downturn in December, January. There's not as much activity. So we have a window coming up. The challenge is, we've got to get all the technology changes done so that we can do the training in the window. So we're really striving hard to hit that window where the pressure is not as intense. But that buffering is a great idea and trying to... And setting the right expectation with our customers. You know, we are one of the best, as Frank said, we're one of the best places to do business in, and we just want to keep it that way. We want people to have a good experience. You know, you can be a regulator, and you can help people comply without being rude about it. There is a way to do this and have customers come away feeling like they had a good experience, even if they didn't get what they wanted. And it's a fine line, and, you know, we're working hard to get there. So that's the update on smart processing. Questions? Great. Thank you.
Great tie, David. Great necktie.
What'd he say, Frank?
Great necktie. Beautiful tie.
You know, both... At Devo Lebo, and he both had on gray suits, yellow shirts, and orange ties. Why don't you guys... Frank was telling me that. He said it was...
This is the weirdest conversation.
Frank said that's an orange tie.
I really find this to be a little strange.
It's orange tie? Andy's got pink on, pink and purple.
Pink and lavender.
Pink and lavender. Okay. Where's your orange tie?
Different palette. Mayor, members of council, from time to time, we feel, whether it's a council member or staff participating in a discussion or event, it's appropriate to share with you what that's about. This falls in the category of advancing our flooding strategy and also benchmarking Norfolk. So last month, John Kiefer, Brian Pennington, Jim Reddick and I participated in a small, intimate forum at the invitation through Fugro of the Henry Hudson Foundation. The Henry Hudson Foundation was established in 2009 as a commemoration of the founding of New Amsterdam, New York, by Henry Hudson in 1609. And the purpose of that was to establish a relationship between the Netherlands and New York around water challenges as coastal cities, coastal countries or states. Those that participated in this forum were New York City, New York State, New Jersey, Netherlands, Rotterdam, and Amsterdam. And what we had was two days of sessions that were both intimate in a group like this, 10 folks sitting around a table, and then some presentations onstage. We had Secretary Donovan, the U.S. Secretary of HUD, participate as well. We had White House officials. What it gave us the opportunity for was to share the Norfolk story, what our strategies are, and learn about what their strategies are. What are they doing? Everybody had some discoveries that people have similar strategies, and then some don't have strategies. For example, Amsterdam, we learned, though they have built infrastructure for a 1,000 and 10,000-year storm, they don't have an evacuation plan. So Jim Reddick and us were able to share with them some of what we're thinking. We established a relationship, so this is very important right now because what we know, based on what the strategy that we've established for our infrastructure that we need to build here in Norfolk, in the foreseeable future, the federal government isn't giving us that opportunity to be that funding partner. And so we need to look for alternative funding mechanisms and also other innovations or strategies for the infrastructure, whether they be green or hardscapes. So we share this with you, but also what we discovered was that some of what we saw that we know we can, we basically need to bundle or improve upon is the notion of being a resilient city. We are signed on and recognized by our flooding strategy for being one of the leading cities in the U.S., and the mayor signed on as one of the 30 resilient cities under the U.S. Conference of Mayors and National League of Cities, leading the way on that. But the idea of resiliency, your ability to recover quickly after a major catastrophe, encompasses more than just flooding mitigation or even emergency response. And so, staff, we are working on developing an actual resiliency plan. And that's some of what was discussed. That New York City, New York State have their resiliency plans. We have Rotterdam's as well and had great discussions with them about what that encompasses. We have a lot of those components built in our stormwater, water, wastewater, our roads and bridges, and even our emergency preparedness plans, but we're going to bundle that together under a resiliency plan. And of course, our flooding strategy is a key component of that. So we thought we'd share that with you, and we'll keep you abreast as those relationships evolve. Amsterdam, Rotterdam, in particular, express great desire to come here to share, to understand some of how we're dealing with this. We're in discussions with the Dutch Embassy about their participation here as well. They have been assisting the city of New Orleans and have helped them devise the plans that New Orleans have for their infrastructure that they're getting ready to release RFPs for. So that cooperation, collaboration continues, and it really builds on what we have with the Rockefeller Reinvest Initiative on getting people to give us really free advice on what we're doing, validate what we're doing, but also look for the alternatives that maybe we haven't seen with the normal path of just, you know, seek for state or federal assistance. So we'll keep you apprised as those collaborations evolve.
Thanks.
And Mayor and Council, we'll wrap up with two presentations from Frank on two topics that will be on the October 22nd agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, or Mr. Mayor. The first one of these that I want to brief you on is a request for a plan amendment under...
assistance. So we'll keep you apprised as those collaborations evolve.
Thank you.
And Mayor and Council will wrap up with two presentations from Frank on two topics that will be on the October 22nd agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, or Mr. Manager. The first one of these that I want to brief you on is a request for a plan amendment under rezoning for Tidewater Commerce Center at 6330 through 60, I'm sorry, 630 through 660 Tidewater Drive. This is the intersection of Tidewater and Brambleton. This is the location, it is at that intersection, it is located within the boundaries of the South Brambleton neighborhood. This is in an area that is currently designated as industrial in that area. Within the neighborhood itself, there are institutional uses, churches, schools, we have residential uses, office uses, retail uses. And this is the request. Initially, the request is to change the general plan, Plan Norfolk 2030, on these parcels from industrial to commercial. And the request for the rezoning then is to change the zoning on those same two parcels from limited industrial to commercial corridor. They have proffered conditions associated with the rezoning, and that is some limitations on the uses, to get rid of uses that would be, were of concern to the residents. They did submit a traffic plan as part of this with DOT, but that plan only looked at the impacts on the state system, so they've committed to updating their traffic analysis in order to address some of the concerns of Public Works Department when they submit their site plan. And they have committed to a development plan in concept for two buildings, both would be retail, one of 12,000 square feet maximum, one of 10,000 square feet maximum, two write-in, write-out-only vehicular access points off of Tidewater Drive, recognizing the volumes of traffic there and concerns about conflicting turning movements, no vehicular access off of Brambleton, again, recognizing that you've, you've got a median barrier there and it becomes very difficult to be moving in and out of. And then they've also committed to a stormwater amenity with the pedestrian walkway around it. This is a conceptual plan. You have the two buildings, the two accessways here and here off of Tidewater, nothing on Brambleton. Their access onto Brambleton would be off of this other street that is behind them, on May Avenue, that is the city right of way right now.
Can I? I mean, do, oh, Angelo, any comments about, about what we're seeing so far?
Well, I've been seeing the construction, not construction actually, but the demolition appeared, and was wondering what was going there, so this is the first I've heard of. And I don't see anything that's awkward at this point.
Is that where a Wawa is supposed to go?
No. You're not going to be able to do a Wawa here because of the problem with access, they're looking at two retail uses. They have had some interest from a dollar store and some interest from a, a drugstore in this location.
I think originally, from the very beginning, they were talking about maybe a drugstore, right? Which we-
They have always been talking about a drugstore. At one point, they wanted to look at a Wawa, which is where that came from, but because of traffic impacts on the interstate system, they ended up backing away from that and looking at something that would create less congestion coming off the interstate.
Like a CVS, Frank, something like that.
Yeah.
Plus its proximity to the school.
Yes, well, the proximity, this is immediately adjacent to the school.
There isn't anything over there like that.
No.
It might be a good, okay.
Again, I am required by state law to acknowledge the VDOT review that was required because of its proximity to I-264. I indicated it would have a minimal impact on the roadway, roadway network maintained by VDOT. As I didn't look at the impacts on the city system, which is why we're working with Public Works, we indicated we would want a more complete traffic analysis in association with the site plan. At the public hearing, we had only the applicant there to speak as a proponent, and as an opponent, we had one letter from a citizen who was opposed to it because originally this came to us with no conditions. And then the week before the public hearing, Mr. Mistraco was able to persuade his client to proffer the conditions that, that I showed you about the limitations on uses, the plan of restrictions on access that began to address staff's concerns. So I do need to acknowledge that the objection, which was based on the lack of specificity, was done before the applicant submitted the letter.
Frank, if you would ask someone in your office to speak with the principal at Roughen, because there was a concern from there, and I just, you know, and I don't know what the concern is, but I wish you would do that.
The concern was Wawa.
That was when it was going to be a Wawa.
And that is what, I had spoken with the principal previously and told her we didn't have any application at that point, so we didn't know what it was going to be, and she had heard it was going to be a, a Wawa. But we'll be happy to get in touch with, with the school. Staff is recommending approval because given the nature of this area and the fact that it is underserved by retail uses, based on the market studies that were done as part of the overall St. Paul's plan, we think that, that it is a good thing to get this commercial use, these retail uses in this neighborhood. And then we are also recommending approval of the rezoning because of the proffers that have been made in order to maintain traffic flow and minimize any pedestrian conflicts coming across Tidewater. Planning Commission, they voted to recommend approval to you on a five to two vote for both plan amendment and the rezoning. The majority concurred with staff. The minority indicated that they felt that the proffers came in too late and that the proffer, the item should have been continued rather than moving forward at this point. And the minority, the people who voted in, the minority, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Fraley.
Who is the developer?
Oh, I don't know if it's going to be on here. I, I don't know who the actual developer is. Mr. Mistraco has been their agent through this. He's the person who spoke for him.
Is it Runnymede?
Runnymede. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Frank, on that diagram right there, all the way to the right, that parking lot, that's the school's parking lot?
Down here?
Right there, yeah, that's staff parking.
Yes, yes, this is staff.
And that one over there, right next to it.
Yes.
Yes. So just if, if a CVS or a Walgreens wants to come on that corner, we in the past have allowed drugstores to sell alcohol, and, you know, we've, we've been cautious in the past, but I'd be concerned about just its proximity to the school with that. And I know that there'll be IDing and stuff, but just the idea of it, I think that's what Mr. Fraley at Roughen was concerned about as well. So I don't know if there's a way, when that comes forward, if it is a drugstore, the limit, it's going to be hard.
Well, no, because if they want to serve alcohol, sell alcohol, they would require a special exception that would have to come back to council. And you have cited in the past proximity to a school as a basis for why you did not want alcohol sold.
Not yet.
But some of us feel that there's absolutely no research to demonstrate that proximity next to a, a middle school demonstrates any more risk. If any kid with any brains at all is going to go farther away from its teachers. I mean, I really, I don't get that. I, I really have never understood that argument, that I know both you and Anthony make-
It's stealing, it's not, it's, it's just the opportunity to steal their cigarettes, they sell cigarettes, they sell alcohol.
So their house is right next to the Walgreens?
The school is right there. You can see the school building in that picture.
I just, I never see-
It's different when it's on the same street, down the street.
It's not even a part of the issue.
But, but it might be an issue if the developers discover that we're going to later on limit that.
I think we would debate it at that time, right?
That would have to come back for you for decision at that point. At this point, all you have in front of you is the plan amendment and the rezoning.
Not right now, we're not.
They have not, they have not, don't have any agreements with anyone. They're in discussion with a drugstore and a dollar store at this point. So that is where we are with that one. The other one we need to brief you on is one that has been out there for a while.
It's on the same property here.
And it was mentioned in the pilot over the weekend, and that is a request from the Norview Civic League for an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance to allow pawn shops in the Five Points PCO. Just as a refresher, the Five Points PCO encompasses all the buildings outlined in red along Sewell's Point Road, both sides of Sewell's Point Road on the west side of Chesapeake. And this regulations in this area are designed to encourage a mix of pedestrian-oriented activities. Last spring, the planning department received a letter from the Norview Civic League requesting that pawn shops be allowed in this PCO by special exception. There is an existing pawn shop located in the PCO. It is a non-conforming use, so it's a legally grandfathered use. It can continue to stay there. The issue is, it can't expand and it couldn't possibly relocate, and this pawn shop is hoping to be able to relocate in the future. Now, the other issue that we're going to have to deal with should they come back in and ask for that relocation is Chapter 24-26 of City Code regulates pawn shops. It caps the number of pawn shops in the city at 16, and it prohibits any relocation of a pawn shop until the total number of pawn shops is less than 16. There are currently more than 16 pawn shops operating in the city, so that is a provision that would have to be waived if this is approved and a pawn shop wanted to relocate in the area. Wouldn't be an issue today, but it is something you would have to consider in the future. At the public hearing on this issue, no one came to speak in support, but we did have a lot of opposition. Three citizens spoke in opposition. We had four letters of opposition, one from a citizen and three from civic leagues, Esterbrook, Norview Heights, and the Five Points Partnership, all submitted letters of opposition. The staff recommendation was approval because there is an existing pawn shop and we felt this could address the non-conforming issue. And because I, I always try to get rid of non-conformities when we can, we recommended approval. Planning Commission recommended denial on a five to one vote, and their recommendation was based on neighborhood opposition. The minority, the one person who did vote for it, Ms. Flood, indicated her support was because of, just like staff, there is an existing pawn shop in the area, and she thought we'd be better off to eliminate that non-conformity. After we, the planning commission public hearing, we were preparing to bring this item to council for action, and the Five Points Partnership asked us to delay. They said they wanted more time to fully understand and evaluate this request. So they first wanted to have a meeting with no staff prep from the city president because they didn't want to be influenced. That was August 21st, and then they met with city staff on September 4th, September 11th, and September 25th. And at the meeting on September 25th, I, I was there that, and I indicated, is there any opposition, or do we have a consensus to allow this to move forward? No one spoke up, so I asked again, is there any opposition? If there is no opposition, if I don't hear anything, we're going to assume we have concurrence to move forward. No one said a word. So that is why we're bringing it back to you. Again, the staff recommendation is approval based on the desire to eliminate the non-conformity. Planning Commission's recommendation was for denial on a five to one vote based on neighborhood opposition that it appears has been overcome as a result of a whole series of meetings with representatives of the neighborhood, and I think this does reflect the importance of applicants talking to neighborhoods when they've got a really controversial request.
Frank, I wonder, would the, would our police department have any statistics or any idea of whether pawn shops contribute to the rash of burglaries and larcenies that we have now? Is something you might be able to find out?
I'll, I'll talk to Chief Goldsmith. He's smiling at me as I say that, to see if we have any information that would address that.
I, I don't know if they contribute, I don't know if they contribute, but I'll tell you what I do think they do, is I think that they are, at times, because of their lack of contacting PD, I think that they encourage that type of work. And I don't think that they, and I, in fact, I told the chief yesterday, this came up at a civic league, not necessarily pawn shops, but I think it was Cash Converters Mike.
Yes, sir.
And that being said, which is something we need to look into for us, to get them brought in and regulated appropriately, because it appears they're not. But I can tell you that pawn shops are just facilitators of the burglaries that occur in the neighborhoods. And if they don't, as far as I'm concerned, and the chief ought to look at and get together to come with attorney's office, if they don't comply with the law, and they ought to be prosecuted just as well as the people who are committing burglaries, because it is, it is just encouraging the conduct, it makes it easy, it facilitates it, and when it does so, then they don't need to go to Virginia Beach and pawn, they can pawn here. And as far as I'm concerned, they ought to be prosecuted just like, just like the person that's caught.
I'm inclined to agree with the planning commission as far as denial is concerned. We have, you know, so many things in the community that, that leads to larcenies and burglaries, and this is one thing I think that it does. And maybe, you know, and I think I've spoken to the property owner of the property, and, but I still believe that we shouldn't expand, even though it's non-conforming, Frank, as a way of life.
Explain to me, if you will, I'm confused about what's the impact on the PCO with this.
Well, right now, the PCO does not allow pawn shops at all. So the first step before you could, and the people who have the pawn shop are currently in the area and they're looking to move into this building. They can't move without, unless the text of the ordinance allows a pawn shop, and then they would still require a special exception and a waiver from the ordinance restrictions in City Code before they would be allowed to move.
Been there a long time, right?
They have been there a long time.
So, but if they leave where they are and expand that, then they need another whole permit.
They can't, yes.
That's, that's why.
Well, they would need a, that same kind of a permit even if they want to expand in their current location.
Yes.
So what is that, so what does that do to the PCO?
At this point, it does nothing to the PCO. The other just-
You know, so many people have approached me and said they're concerned about the, you know, dissolution of the PCO in this area.
This is not related to that. It has become confused with that issue because as we were trying to look at streamlining the PCO processes, we have had meetings here in this neighborhood with, with representatives looking at that process. And on September 25th, I indicated to them that with regard to the PCO, we have three options. Leave it exactly the way it is. Look at amending it to try to see if we can make it work more efficiently, or repeal it. And after a lengthy amount of discussion, Mr. Stein, who was running that meeting, stood up and he said, "Well, we've had a lot of discussion about repealing, and there does not seem to be any opposition." Oh, I stood up there and I said, "Wait a minute, Stanley, is there any opposition to that? Because if there is, we need to keep talking about it." No one said a word. Well, I've seen the article in the newspaper, some of the people who were present and didn't speak up at that meeting were quoted in the newspaper disagreeing with the whole concept. So what I've suggested is, we need to go back out to the area and actually ask these questions again.
So, so what does this mean for the whole city? So if we allow this to happen and we give a special exception for this, have we now opened up Pandora's Box for other pawn shops to relocate with it? Because right now, the, the law says you can't relocate, you have to stay in your place. So does this then now open that up?
An excellent question, because I asked that same question of Mr. Pishko when this first came up. Wouldn't this come into play? And I think Bernard did some research, or he had it on, his staff did some research and found it had been, that this provision had been waived at least once before.
Right.
It's a precedent, but it doesn't necessarily-
You'll hear that argument.
Okay.
So what's the answer then to his question?
That you're not bound by it, but it is something that somebody would be likely to say to you, is that in fairness, you've allowed somebody, so it'll, it'd be an argument that you say, it'll remain in your discretion.
But you're saying it could open it up?
Not, not legally. I mean, but it sets a precedent, and we can always, we can always distinguish it if we wanted to or not. I mean, it, it doesn't have any-
Could someone move, now let's say for instance that it just passes what I've been done, could someone move into your old building as a pawn shop, since it's already a pawn shop?
No, sir, because you still, they would also have to come to you and ask for the waiver. They would not need the special exception because that site would have already been grandfathered, but they would need the waiver. So it doesn't open anything up until the total number of pawn shops get down to no more than 16. Bernard, I'm glad you and I talked about this before this came.
So if he, he's not, he now is going to move under a special exception, so technically, if an issue came up like Councilman Protagero said, you could actually go in now and shut it down because he's no longer grandfathered in, similarly to ABC. So if, if you found that there was illegal activity going in there, could you pull that special exception?
I cannot, but city council can revoke special exceptions for calls.
So actually, it almost can be a good thing, if, but if he's a good operator, it's not a big deal, but-
Because one would hope if there's illegal activity, it doesn't matter whether there's a special-
But if, I said if, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, we don't need a special exception to cut, to stop illegal activity, you know, whether it has- You know, whether it has a special exception or not, if it has illegal activity...
But the owner of that property, the current one, because it's grandfathered in, he could be sound jilted, and then he could give the business to somebody else, right?
You can't have a change of owners, there's a very restrictive provision in City Code, that would also require a waiver.
I'm still concerned about the fact that we'd be setting a precedent, and somebody else would ask for a waiver, and then they'd come in as somebody else we've heard about this week, saying, "Well, you've done this for other folks," and leaves...
I think that's illegitimate.
Yeah, and leaves future councils, city councils, you know, at...
Does the whole measure of special exception mean that it's something out of the ordinary or special or, you know, unusual? I mean, the whole notation of special exception means that you are making an exception to the rule, so there's really not a rule for making an exception to the rule.
It doesn't sound like this type of retail is desirable for the plans for Five Points, that if you look at, see, I would rather look at the Plan 2030, and if that, if this doesn't fit in there, then this is what the community, all the conversations we had about the future of that, so if we allow something like this, we're then changing the whole plan. So when you guys did the plan, is this the type of establishment they wanted to continue there?
When we developed the plan, we did not look at specific retail uses. What we looked at is a desire for retail in this area, which has been a stated desire of the residents. But in the general plan, you don't get into the idea of, is it a gas station, is it a restaurant, is it, what is it? It was just, this is a good location, where there is a need for retail services.
But in the putting and putting together of the PCO, though, they excluded pawn shops.
Correct.
So that does indicate that that is not what they wanted for the future of...
The community came back to the, the request came to the planning commission from a neighborhood in the area, and that was where the discussion all began, because then you had other neighborhoods saying they didn't want it, which is why the Five Points Partnership wanted to have a series of meetings to try to ascertain what the goal was. And after the fourth meeting, they were all indicating, everyone that was at that meeting indicated their support for this amendment.
But, you know, we take, we have to take a broader view.
Understood.
And how many were at this meeting?
Twenty, twenty-five people.
But the, but the planning commission did not revisit their vote after the...
Planning commission cannot.
Okay, so that vote was the same.
In order, in order for the planning commission to revisit their vote, they have to do it at the meeting after they voted, or it would have been...
They voted against it, the community changed their mind. They voted against it, the community changed their mind. You just showed twice, not late. And you might have implied that they voted against it, then they still voted against it, they just voted against it.
They voted against it one time.
Where is that, Frank? What, is that near Green Street? What street, what streets are they?
This is Green Street, right here.
That's Green Street.
Yes.
Now, the tax company has made a tremendous investment...
Yes, they have.
...in their property.
They are up here, because they were rezoned to C4, they are no longer eligible to be in the PCO, and that was one of the things that was discussed, the largest investment that has been made in this area since the PCO was created, was only able to be done by removing the PCO from that property.
Now, how much square footage in terms of the property, how much larger is this proposed site?
I don't know that the site, overall site is larger, but the building they want to go into would be larger, and I don't have any specifics on that because we're not at the point where I can look at that level of detail, it's purely the text request. We have not accepted an application for a special exception for the pawn shop until we were able to get in front of city council, because I need to be able to give that applicant some idea of where we are in the process.
And the applicant owns both buildings?
My understanding that he has acquired both buildings now.
Has that particular pawn shop had a record of operating clean and well, I mean, is the police department?
I don't know. I have heard nothing negative about this particular operator.
Okay, we're going to have to leave it there. I have an issue to present to the council. The manager and I have been not only invited once, but several times by the president of MERSK, who was having a screening of the Captain Phillips movie over at Nauticus. He actually requested it one time for us to cancel the meeting after we looked at some, well, we were, but we had some advertisements that were already out there for public hearings, and I wanted to, I wanted to drop the meeting to two, but Marcus said no, so, but, so, so anyways, but here's the issue. I talked to the vice mayor, and the vice mayor was supposed to be here, he is, he has, but he had something happen just before the meeting, and I'm not aware exactly of the nature of, but he's then now sending an email saying that he will not be here. So I've asked the city attorney to research the issue about who's going to conduct the meeting. There are no rules, so it typically would fall to the most senior person.
And that would decline.
Okay, then it, then it would go to Berkeley.
Well, hold it, in that case, I'll take it.
I thought we said decline. Or is letting them down to decline and just see what happens? Or you could draw straws.
And what does it say that goes as the most senior person?
No, it doesn't, I mean, but that just seems to be the best, that would be the reasonable way to do that.
So we've talked about ties and shirts, and now we're moving on to movies, is that what we're going? All right, I do have one for the thing. There's a vote that many of you may have seen, it's coming up, this PH5, and I've just been hearing from the neighborhood and their concerns about this. I am very much in favor of moving this development forward for the downtown, but I am disappointed that the Neighborhood League was not involved in the discussions there, upset about not being carved out. I just didn't want to surprise you all when we got upstairs, that I'm not, Frank tells me, who's worked very hard on this and has done what we've asked him to do, except for this little area, that to re, to carve it out would delay it until January. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Can we pass it and amend it later if we can pass it?
Well, I don't know.
What's the urgency of it passing now?
Can we amend it later if we can pass it?
What's the urgency of it passing now? Does it have any implications if we don't talk about it tonight, vote on it tonight?
No, sir, if you would like to defer the action, you completely have that discretion as well.
I'd rather defer it, because I'd like, I, we got, I got the letter today.
Exactly.
And they made some good points. And I'd like to be able to at least understand both sides of the equation.
I would appreciate that, Andy.
Yeah, I agree.
That's great, and now we're only down to five of us, right?
Look, the other thing is, if anybody has any heartburn about something that's going to happen tonight, because there's only five of you, please continue it, okay? I mean, don't kill somebody.
While we're saying, while we're saying and working...
We'll stand, we'll have fun.
Mr. Riddick, the motion to continue, okay?
We got your back.
Brian, you going too?
No.
Okay.